I'll call to order our regularly scheduled city council meeting on Monday, August the 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. But the records reflect that mayor will be presiding tonight, as well as all council members are present in a county far. Our interim city administrator, Ms. Vance, is here with us, along with parish department heads, our city clerk, Ms. Cindy Miller, and our city attorney, Mr. Daniel Hughes, joins me again. We'll reserve John for the witness stand. Daniel's up here, so we appreciate him being with us tonight, as well as our department heads. Thank you for being here and members of our public. We certainly appreciate you attending either in person or remotely. If we have anyone remotely, appreciate that. Our invocation, pledge, allegiance, next order of business, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those who choose to pray, please bow your head at this time.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight, we thank you for your continued grace and love. We ask you for direction and guidance tonight and always, so that we may accomplish the goals that are pleasing in your eyes. We pray tonight for our parents, for our students and teachers, as another school year is upon us. Keep them safe and healthy throughout the year. We ask all these blessings in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Ms. King. No proclamations or presentations tonight. Our reading and approval of minutes, we will approach those with unanimous consent based on you've had these in your packets since Friday, so hopefully you've had a chance to read them. Is there any corrections or adjustments to any of the minutes that we need to note? Here none, we'll consider the minutes approved by unanimous consent. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This will be the first of two public comments. Did anyone sign up? No one signed up, so with that, I will skip the guidelines for public comments. Next item will be report from our city administrator. Vance?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. So kind and being so helpful. Patient as we work.
Thank you, Ms. Vance. At this time, be sure I note the Chamber of Commerce is not present with us this evening. We did get an email. Hopefully each one received one with their calendar of events, so please refer to that. Public, I would refer you to their website. We've got some exciting things come up. I think the only one I presently remember is a grand opening hollow barber shop, I believe.
Thursday, Aug. 7:30.
Good. Good. Thank you for noting that. Reports from standing committee, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a fairly light agenda packet this past month, just a little housekeeping coming up in the meeting, but other than that, we're fresh into a new budget year, so everybody's budgets look fantastic right now. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public safety, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report, other than my annual reminder of school zones and speed. I'm sure we're, Chief Miller, I'm sure we're out in full force, as we always are, with the beginning of a new school year. That's all I have, though. Thank you.
Ms. King, Public Works, Mr. Craylon?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Sir? Economic planning and development, Mr. Mattney?
We're good, Mayor. Thanks.
Sir? Building codes, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to report that late business license fees are starting to come in.
And Recreation, Mr. Allgood?
No report, Mayor.
Sir? There is no unfinished business, so we'll move straight to new business. First item on the agenda is an ordinance, Ms. Miller?
We have two ordinances tonight for first reading. The first one is an ordinance to rezon property consisting of approximately 23 acres located at North Main Street and providing effective date. This is between Kellets and CF Sour.
Smaller coming from Business Development and Services, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this on first reading.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Mattney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve on first reading, the rezoning of approximately 23 acres on North Main Street, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the voting is unanimous. Back to you, Ms. Miller?
The next ordinance is an ordinance to rezon property consisting of approximately five acres located at West Butler Road and Laurel Meadows Parkway and providing an effective date.
Smaller, back to you, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this rezoning on first reading.
I have a motion for first reading approved, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Is there any discussion? Ms. Kuzner?
I have a question for the developer, please.
Developer, press it. I need this one.
There we go. Okay. Alson Allen Arborland Design 49 Greenland Drive in Greenville.
Thank you. I just want to know, so one of the questions from a resident was regarding fencing along West Butler, and I believe that had not been considered, but landscaping would be put in.
Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, there is a curve on West Butler, and one of the residents said that sometimes when they're coming out of Laurel Meadows Parkway to turn right onto West Butler, they have trouble seeing because of the curve. So I'm just, I'm concerned about putting landscaping there, so I wouldn't want it to block the view of that curve. I just want to make sure that that's something that y'all will be mindful of.
Yes, ma'am. We've got a good bit of room back there. We can push everything up to the front, but we definitely like to landscape what we can, but we'll make sure that, you know, site distance is not interfered.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of follow-up questions as well. Sorry to make you go back.
Oh, no, it's all right.
What is, what is the current perimeter setback that you are planning for this property?
Should be 25, but let me double check my site plan here. Yes, sir, 25.
One of the things that the Planning Commission expressed concerns of was lack of amenities for this project. It does seem like a fairly dense project. The one that we actually just spoke of a few moments ago was 99 units on 15 acres. This one is 57 on five. Any concerns that we should have about the density of this project and the amenities for this project?
I think that the density is, it is high on this site, but I think you've got a similar density with the developments that are around it. So I don't think that the density is necessarily inconsistent. I know it's not the word you use, but amenities, that's going to be just something we're going to have to drive when we get to. We're having conversations with builders, and right now, they're asking other questions. So we are just not quite there yet on what we're going to do, if anything amenity-wise. And that can be something that I can have an answer for, you know, next meeting, if it's a no or a yes, whatever it may be, at least it's an answer, so.
Yeah, my concern is that it is fairly dense, and there was that concern about amenities. I always ask about setbacks, because I'm always looking for something that's beyond the minimum. So that, those are, those are my concerns, based on what was given to us, so. Okay. That's all the questions I have.
All right.
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. This came out of Planning Commission with a six oh vote. Is that correct? That's where our packet had. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. Thank you.
What else? We have a motion to approve on first reading, the rezoning of West Butler Road and Laurel Meadows Parkway, approximately five acres. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Vote is six one, Mr. Craylon. Now we're at the standing committee items. Ms. Miller?
Council is requested to consider a request by East Butler Investments for the city to contract with Piedmont Landscaping for landscaping services at Maverick Station at 1 East Butler Road.
I believe this is coming from Economic Development, Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor. So to go ahead and get the discussion started, I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Reynolds? Any discussion? Mr. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is out of normal practice for, for what we do. I mean, number one, as we discussed in committee, right now, the city maintains all of the right-of-way areas in, in this particular area. And as far as this particular piece goes, you know, until we start making that change, this really goes out of sort of, goes out of city policy. So when we forwarded this, it was largely to get discussion, and obviously, we've asked Public Works Committee to discuss the larger subject. But right now, we're in a situation where Public Works maintains the right-of-way, and so this goes outside of that, and I'd like to hear what the rest of council has to say in terms of input, thoughts, feelings. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I understand currently, the city is currently maintaining this property. So I have a couple of concerns just this evening quickly. Number one is mostly procurement related. We have a procurement policy for a reason, and in this case, I feel like we need to follow that. And if this is approved, it would not be following that procedure. Number two, like I said, I understand the city's currently maintaining it. There's a difference between, in my opinion, between landscaping and maintaining the landscaping and the precedent that it sets. So if we do this for this one corner, then what is that going to lead to down the road? That's all I have at this time for just general comments. Thank you.
This is brought up for discussion, awareness for the rest of council. I also have concerns about the procurement process. If we were to hire somebody to do the, to do this, currently, if I look over there right now, it looks pretty good. So there's not, I don't see there's a dire need to have this happen right away if we, if we decide to go this way. We need to evaluate, is this going to be a savings for the city or a cost to the city? Does it cost more to maintain some of these right-of-ways? Or if we hire out, maybe there's some savings in allowing us to get other things done, you know, additional hiring, that type of stuff. It just really needs to be analyzed, not just for this area, but also for the city as well, as a policy. All I have to say.
Kuzner?
I just want to say I concur. I agree with all of them.
Her with a motion to approve.
I concur with, with the comments made from the three.
Sure. Thank you. Who wants to add? Never been shy, so I'll jump in there, too. I also agree with Ms. King. I think this doesn't fit our procurement policy to approve it at the council level tonight, even though we're the governing body and we can do that, but it does step out of a procurement policy that was developed in the past and well thought out, and maybe it's time that we reevaluate it, and that's a topic for a different discussion. But we're growing very, very rapidly to some, and we're going to probably begin to stress our PW department. We already take care of right-of-ways on our major intersection, our interstates and intersections that come into our city, and they're there. They can do a great job, but as we dress up our internal city, we're going to put more and more of a burden on them. So my thought would be to see this go back or to go to the PW committee and for them to study and analyze and work with our administrator to determine, to do this, and as we grow and all this, this is the manpower we have, and we're going to need the equipment, we're going to need the attention to detail to make this property pop, if you would for a better word, as far as seasonal flowers, flower beds that are kept up, not replaced with stone, but kept up is very attractive and things like that, and do that study. And I think the coordination with Economic Development, who has been intimately involved in getting our city much more attractive, not only to those who want to live here, but to work, not play here, part of that is the aesthetics, which is not my forte. So, you know, I don't know a lot about that. As I've told you all in the past, my cultural art is a jumbo chili cheeseburger with fries from Kelletts, so that's what I know about art and culture and that kind of stuff. So from that, the aesthetic value is, though, I believe we do have a worthy staff that could weigh in on that. I'd love to see it go to PW for a little more vetting, if there's nothing earth-shattering about if all that landscaping is going to die before we can properly look after it. I think our PW will continue doing that for the seasons ahead of us, so look at it from a bigger picture standpoint. We are going to see this come up probably more often. So that's my thought.
Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion and offer substitute motion.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, you had the second, is okay if you withdraw it second?
Yes. Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Mattney just.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we commit this to the Public Works Committee.
We have a motion to forward this to the PW committee?
Second.
At a second in stereo, Mr. Craylon, Mr. Reynolds, I believe. I'll let Ms. Miller work that out. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to forward this to the PW committee for proper vetting, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, this item is referred to the PW committee. Okay. Thank you. Back to Ms. Miller?
Council is requested to consider the certification of distressed textile mill site tax credits for BBMA Malden, as they seek to redevelop a property at 255 Service Bay Road for a 12,000 square foot daycare.
Yeah, I believe this is also Economic Development, Mr. Matt?
Mayor, I move that we approve a resolution to certify property at 255 Service Bay Road Malden as an abandoned textile mill site.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Reynolds? Any discussion? The note I had was we were pending legal review. Did we get that? That was a nod of a yes from legal? Or yeah, please weigh in.
Yes, Mayor, we have reviewed the resolution. It complies with state law, and this matter will come back for you during your ordinance to tax statute that we're following, the landowner's tax credits. But this is just to approve the site as a distressed textile mill site.
Sir? Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution of declaring the site at the location of 225 Service Bay Road as a distressed textile mill site tax available for tax credits, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous.
Council is requested to adopt a resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement.
Economic Development, Mr. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt resolution approving an agreement with 101 North Main Street Partners LLC.
I have a motion from Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Craylon? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract of sales of 101 North Main Street Partners, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous.
Council is requested to approve a contract with Clemson University for assistance with help in the security for home games for the football team's home games during the season.
Okay, from Public Safety, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Miller said, this is a contract with Clemson University. It's a contract that we've had in place for 15-plus years, and it's just customary that we renew this contract on an annual basis. I'll make the motion to approve the contract for law enforcement services at Clemson University Special Events.
We have a motion to approve the contract?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Craylon? Any questions or discussions? Question I have, Ms. King, this is labeled a contract, and per our policy, the contracts are signed, authorized to be signed by this council for the mayor. There's no place on this for the mayor to sign. It's historically been the chief, so do we continue that? Is there a case where our department is signing a contract? It's contrary to what we've been led in the past.
I would refer that to our legal counsel at this time.
I think the better course of action is to continue with our policy, authorize the mayor to sign the contract, the city, the appropriate procedure that the city should follow. All that would be was an amendment to the contract to add your signature to the contract.
To rephrase your motion or withdraw it or?
Yes, sir, I'll rephrase it, but just for clarification, we will keep the police chief's name on there to be a signature as well, so we're just going to add the mayor.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Craylon, would you remove this?
I would.
Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will change my motion to approve the contract for law enforcement services at Clemson University Special Events with an amendment to add the mayor as a signature line on the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craylon. Any discussion?
Go Tigers.
Thank you.
Or Gamecocks.
I sincerely appreciate that. For that, I wouldn't say I don't. I know you want to real bad, don't you?
Drawing that motion, yeah. Sounds good. Decent.
Okay. Hearing none, motion to authorize the continuation of the contract of Clemson University and signed by our police chief, and to amend it to authorize the mayor to sign the contract. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item, Smaller?
Council is requested to approve an open burning permit for Adams Glen subdivision.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mention to approve the open burning permit as requested by Terra Flex Group.
Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Craylon? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve open burning permit? Lost the name as we want to say.
Tara.
Adams Glen. Say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Item, Smaller?
Council is requested to approve a change order on the existing contract with Sealy Construction to connect the footbridge to Bridgeway Station.
Okay, this is coming from Recreation, Mr. Allgood?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we send this back to committee.
Okay, I have a motion to return this to committee, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Reynolds? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of a motion to return this item to committee, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion and item is remanded to committee. Item, Smaller?
Council is requested to approve a contract with Evergreen Solutions for a compensation in class study.
Coming out of Finance and Policy, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a contract with Evergreen Solutions to complete a comp in class study with a fiscal impact of 28.5, and that's not to exceed 28.5, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second from Ms. King? Thank you. Any discussion?
Just one quick comment, Mr. Mayor. This would be, the last comp in class study was done in 2018, and as everybody who's an employee or an employer knows, the market for employees has changed drastically, so it's important to us to make sure that we're competitive, not with other private and, not just with other public industries, but private industries as well. So this will enable our human resources department to make sure that we're as competitive as possible to get the highest quality candidates for our field positions. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Good then. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other comments? I, question I had, the funding for 28.5 not to exceed, which I sincerely appreciate that, is coming from where? Sapper Company, could you answer that, or Mr. Putnam? This will be coming out of 2023 budget. Which we don't know about yet. Not officially, since the audit's not done. She said that smiling, we're happy. She said that smiling, we're happy with that, okay? This, again, is also a contract, so you're authorized to meet this time. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve comp and class study and awarded to Evergreens LLC, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are now back to the second public comment period, which no one signed it for either. Appreciate that. Is there anyone online? No one online. Okay, thank you. Council concerns? Mr. Mattney?
Just thoughts with all of the teachers, students, parents who are sending their kids back to school today, all of the parents who have either moved their kids into college or who will be moving them into college on Friday. And she's not here, and I hate that she's not here, but yesterday was Joanne Chandler's birthday, so happy birthday, Joanne.
She actually received a phone call yesterday and had a duet singing Happy Birthday to her, and I delivered the cookies today. She was at the GPAC committee meeting. Certainly appreciate you, Joanne, one of our local business owners. Even though she's not in the city, we all go there kind of thing. And we're happy for those to get a successful and uneventful moving into the university of their choice in the great state of South Carolina. Yes, it pains me to say it that way, but that's okay.
Mr. Mattney has to go. First time's always the hardest.
It is, it is. Any other council concerns? Hearing none, what is council's pleasure on adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.